17, 2020. At the Cristo City Memorial Library, 117th Street, Cristo City, Texas. I would like to proceed to the agenda, item one, call the meeting to order at the time.
6:31 PM.
6:31, thank you. Uh, welcome to the State of the Forum.
Thank you, Mayor President. We have Mayor Frank Moreno Jr., Mayor Portem Richard Diaz, Councilman Troy Barajas, and Councilman Alfredo Daigos. For the record, absent is Councilwoman Ms. Arby. We have a forum.
Thank you. Hello, everyone here, our city staff, and former Mayor Mary Guetta, and former county, uh, City Manager, C. K. Rosbón, and former Councilman Jaime Skipper, uh, and, uh, all our staff. Uh, thank you for being here. Now, I'd like to ask you to please stand for the Premier Leader's appearance. The Premier Leader is the flag of the United States of America into the Department of Public Affairs. One nation, one government. And the way that we're living, we're better than we were before. So, once again, we're together, uh, together to make the decisions, to do the best we can for our community and our citizens, and please help us do so. Amen. Uh, the citizens' comments.
No one to sign that, ma'am.
Uh, we have approval of minutes, regular meeting, uh, 2020. We have a motion to approve those minutes. The move, uh, the motion by Councilman, uh, Mayor Portem Richard Diaz. Uh, we have seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by, uh, Barajas, Councilman Barajas. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a special meeting on November the 9th, 2020. Uh, we have a motion to approve those minutes. Motion by Mayor Portem Richard Diaz. Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Barajas. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, out of eight, information items about our, uh, Facebook district. If it's going here, you may do them.
Okay, the collection for this year so far, the ones of October, was, uh, 225,344, less 24%.
Any questions, any, uh, anything? Thank you. Proceeding to, uh, the departmental reports. And, uh, City Manager is not here tonight. She has, uh, quarantined for COVID, so, uh, we should quarantine for, uh, four days, so, she'll be here, if you're to discuss the departmental reports. So, if there's any questions on the departmental reports, it's not going to proceed to the committee, committee report. Again, uh, I don't believe there's any, uh, if anyone needs the, the, the DC.
No, sir, I have not met.
Okay. So, having said that, the City Manager's report, um, again, she may not be here, so, we do not have a report to that. Uh, the P. updated on Mary Street, and the Placita project, the first by Councilman Troy Barajas.
Okay, do you have anything on that?
I know that we have, uh, submitted the request to the attorney, and the attorney requested information from Ms. Camarillo to proceed on, uh, the next step. And that's on, on the Amadeus Street. And on the Placita, we have here the, uh, the representatives of the construction companies doing the work, if, uh, for them to give a report on that, Mr. and Mrs. Guerrero.
Ms. Barajas, you're on the go here. Oh, okay, good evening, everybody. On the Placita project, I would say that we are 85% finished with the project. Um, we have all the accessories needed, you know, to finish it. Everything for the restrooms, for the roofing, the doors, um, we're basically, we're basically done. You know, we, we faced delays, just like everybody with the coronavirus, um, but we're almost there. Like I said, we're like, um, I don't know if you guys have been out there, but it's like 85% uh, complete.
When did this project started? Or when was it awarded?
It's been a while, Ms. Barajas. Like, maybe, I don't know, maybe the beginning of the year.
Beginning of the year?
Maybe.
We have to stop the project.
Or stop it, and then we continue.
Yeah, we, we've been, um, delayed twice, and then we've been quarantined like three times, um, so things have happened. Our materials were taking forever to get here, and it's not like if we could go shopping for them, it would have to be, you know, pick up, you know, we order, we go and pick up and wait, and, um, pero gracias a Dios, we have everything, it's just like a puzzle. Now, we just gotta, you know, put in the hand dryers, the toilets, and stuff like that. But the Placitas there, the restrooms already constructed and everything, it's just like I said.
Do you know what's the ETA for the petition?
Um, I don't know. Well, hopefully, I would say maybe a class two weeks, three weeks.
Not wanting you to, but I just want to.
No, I know, yeah, no, because también, you know, it, it, I mean, we want to finish it too, no creas, you know. We started it, and we were delayed, so we had to start other projects, so. That one's at the top, you know, we're almost, we're almost done. I don't know if you guys have been out there, but it's totally different.
I was there about, um, about two weeks ago, and I took some pictures. On the roof, I didn't know, but on the roof, there's, uh, there's, uh, holes, like, like holes, or like, you're gonna install something on the roof?
The beams, for the new restroom?
No, no, I'm talking about the roof.
Are you talking about the lane, the main cabin?
No, yes.
Are you putting some skylights or something like that? You know, something that would make through.
I'm not sure which, the panels? The panels? Oh, okay, yes, yes, where the holes are at, yeah, those panels are brand new, we have them as well. It's gonna be almost, not, not, almost like a skylight. You'll have natural light in there.
Those will be covered with, uh, with lights or?
No, 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 I va, our panel también. Not our panel, I'm sorry, la mi, la mi.
And the restrooms, are they completed?
The restroom's already there, like I said, we only need the accessories. But now, we, the, you know, we need the doors, install the urinals, the sinks, the toilets, pero it's there already, it's there already.
Because when I was there, they were just, uh, they don't want toilets or anything, don't want doors?
Uh, I have them, pero como the doors aren't installed yet, I don't want to install them until you, uh, guys are able to lock them and open them when you guys are going to be there. Okay, yeah, I'm not gonna install anything until, you know, the doors are, are there, which, you know, it'll be in the next few days that we'll install the doors.
So you do have the doors?
Pero, oh, don't, Ms. Barajas, we have everything at home, we have, um, everything, every single thing.
So, so, once you install them, we need to be responsible to lock them, and maybe put a?
Yeah, well, of course, I'll turn in the, the keys, once, you know, that they're locked in.
Are they gonna be like key, or they're gonna build like a locker?
No, with key.
With key.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yes. And whoever's in charge of your parks will probably, you know, have to.
Are you saying more or less like two to three weeks?
Yes, sir. I was under the understanding that the restrooms were only gonna be in use if there was an event there.
If there was an event.
Right, other than that, they're, they will be closed to the public, unless there's an event there. Yes, sir.
I just, I want to go back to the maverick, you know.
Thank you.
Um, so, you say, uh, I haven't talked to Ms. Camarillo about that, but something about a piece of land, that that's what's really important, or?
Let me refresh, or give you the last email of our engineer, just give me one moment.
Well, can, well, Ms., Ms. Araya, can you go a little bit further, so you can enlighten me of what's going on?
Uh, okay, that, what's that? We hired engineers because they're doing the assessment on, on see what is needed to open that street.
Okay, when, hold on, so when, when did that assessment started?
Oh, God, um. Let me see, I could tell you exactly what. And it'd be. It would probably be, because I, our E-NOS with Mr. Conduo, our engineer, go back to October of 2019.
So, have the assessment been completed?
No, they're going by stages, depending on, uh, and so the stage that they are at right now is, um, the recommendation to take it, uh, before the city attorney, for him to advise the council on the next step, which would be... It was back in April 15th.
Of this year, of 2020?
Uh, of, let's see. Yes, 2020.
Okay, and have, have you spoken to our attorney?
Ms. Camarillo did, I haven't. Ms. Camarillo forwarded the information to him on what success is recommending, and then, uh, she told me to forward him the information to our city attorney, and I did. I know that he, he sent an email back saying that he needed to be, uh, he didn't know anything about it. And so, I know that Ms. Camarillo, and I sent him the information a long time ago, and so he says, I, I'm sorry, I haven't had the time to review it. I've been really busy, and so can you just resend it, and I'll look at it this time? And so he has it now.
So, when you say he has it now, was it just reset, reset recently, or?
Yes, I sent it to him, let me see, I, what's, um... I sent it to him on... My phone doesn't give me refresh, uh, let me see if I can get it here. My phone doesn't refresh my, my recent, you know, I don't know why, but I can get it here on my, um...
But this attorney that we're talking about, that's this, and Mr. Yalobos?
Mr. Yalobos. This was recent, last, when Mr., uh, Mayor, uh, Councilman Barajas requested it, um... Have you remember, Mr. Barajas, when you requested, I was at the two weeks ago?
It was like, like, it's three.
And so let me go to my email and see, um, I can, I can forward you that email if you would like, once I get going here.
You, you can do that, I appreciate it.
Okay.
So, so, you said that we have to go through phases, right? So, what we complete that phase, what other phases do we have to go through?
The cons, the hiring, uh, uh...
The surveyor?
No, the, the surveyor's been done, surveying has been done, the engineer has been done, it's now, it will be the construction part, and that's where the, the big bucks will come in.
Okay, when you said big buck, what do you mean?
He said that it was going to be a lot of money to build that road, I don't know how much.
Okay, so, is for the construction of the road, or for?
Everything that currently matters, the road bridge, the road curbs and gutters.
Oh, okay, good. Doctor, thank you very much.
On that, on that, on that property, remember, we have, we have a lot of problems with, uh, not the owner of the property, but the renter, renter of that, uh, property, and, uh, we finally were able to settle that, that issue, but it was a constant thing. The, the renter did most of it, he kept saying that it was, he, we couldn't do anything, you know, so... But, finally, the owner said, okay, yes, you can do it. But, okay, once we got that, it's, it's been a, it's been a long workday. It would be nice to get that done soon as possible, though, you know?
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Because I know we need that, we need that. I get out there, and it's hard, and then the emergency management, the emergency teams, you know, they, they have to go in one way and come out another. They have to go in there, this way, uh, they have another way in and out.
But every other, as you know, that, you know, it's just one entrance and one exit.
Right, you know, I, I understand, I understand the concern, I understand what you are doing. I think, back when I was in, 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 uh, Ms. Camarillo's shoes, we, uh, elected to open it, but then there was a change of council, and they, they kind of reversed our decision, but, like, I really appreciate you all, and we.
No, we can say that.
And, you know, but because it's just a concern for like community, because they only have one entrance.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we are experiences, we have experience, and whenever there is some construction in there, there's one rock. We can't go out, we can't go in and out, you know, we're stuck.
Okay, well, hopefully, uh, if, uh, we, we have to get in touch with, uh, Mr. Yalobos and find out what, uh, what's gonna happen.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, uh, who's, uh?
I will forward you guys that email as soon as I get, uh, I mean, I know I have it here, but as soon as I find it.
Okay.
Mayor Moreno, maybe we, maybe we leave since? We're good, we're good to go?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, you're welcome. Bye.
Uh, considerations, item, item 9.1, consideration for protection regarding amendment, amendment, a resolution, number 05-11, the going of rules and procedures that come up at city council meeting. I don't, uh... This, uh, this policy, is this the latest that we have?
No, that's an old one, it, the, the current one, uh, may be this one, but it was something that you guys, I'm assuming, approved when I wasn't here, because that's what you've been practicing, but I couldn't find any, any resolution to that effect.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't remember approving any, anything other than that, but if this, this is the, the resolution that we have to go by, we have nothing else, then, uh, then we have to, uh, either, either change this, or, or do a, a new resolution.
Correct.
I, uh, I read this, uh, I read this several times, and, uh, then we need to, uh, uh, we need to do changes, uh, the council, whatever the council decides, the council member, if, uh, if you have some changes that we need to do that, you just provide it to us, and, uh, we go ahead and do that, and do a new resolution, and bring it up for, for approval.
Okay, so you want us to sign the changes, ma'am?
Yes, yes, I think we need to, uh... But, if, if this is what we're going to do right now, if this is all we have, Senator, and this is the, the ordinance that we do.
Yes, because what you're, and it's a resolution. Because, because when I, when I was hired, your meeting was at 6:30, and, and it, here it says 7.
At 7, right.
And, and you had you, as the mayor, and all city council members, and city managers, told me that, and, and any of you guys could come to me for an agenda item, and that's what you've been practicing for the last four years.
But that's not what it says in the resolution.
Right, so then, I'm, I'm thinking that something must have been changed in the process when I wasn't here, and I remember all the documents were lost, and the FBI took a lot of stuff, and so I'm thinking that that point is when that was changed, but there is no document that reflects that.
So, I, I think there, to me, I think it would be, uh, time for us to review the resolution.
Absolutely.
And make changes, and just bring current.
Yes, absolutely.
There's some things that I would like to, uh, suggest that we eliminate.
Yes.
Uh, uh, and one, one correction, if, like, you saw Anna said, you know, says here 7 o'clock, we start at 7:00, or at 6:30, or 6 o'clock, so, you know, we just need to bring it up of current.
Okay.
So, looking, we scheduled for, to put in our next agenda item, or the next meeting?
Next meeting.
The, the resolution?
Yes, for, for against, for the, do you have to go through reading the resolution first, or?
No.
Just a one time?
Not a resolution, but, uh, if you, if you have, uh, any changes that, that's wrong, you know, just provide them to, uh, to Ms. Alala, so we can get, get it done before the meeting, and then maybe she can send you a copy of, uh, what's proposed to come before the council.
Sure.
Okay, and then, then you can, uh, look at it, and let us know if you agree or disagree, or whatever, it needs to be changed. And we don't have to wait for the last minute.
Right, I agree.
And I agree that there's, uh, there's some changes that, uh, need to be done here. Okay, so, um, what, what, what we change, if, if, that I, that I'm looking at right now, is that, Rule number 11, page 51, uh, this is a lot to report, we see a council, we made the affirmative vote of 30 for more members of the council. Okay, now, that needs to be changed, uh, because it says that we need to have three members of the council present.
No, that's on the vote.
Huh?
That's on the vote. You said rule 11, it says voting. It says three or more, because the majority, majority would be three.
Right. The majority of the three, in voting, in voting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Perfect.
I think the one that you're referencing, uh, Mayor Portem, is the, um, rule number...
Number?
Number one, a letter B. I think that's what, uh...
Right, right, that's the one that we need to check, okay.
Okay. And then what I'm seeing here also is, uh, that information to be, uh, to be submitted for the agenda might be provided to the city court, not there than 2:00 PM, over the Wednesday preceding the meeting, at which, uh, the same is to be considered. So, by, by this policy, Senator, that means that, uh, information has to be provided to you by 2:00 PM, the Wednesday before the meeting, right?
Yes.
So that's almost, uh, almost a week before.
And I know that section was revisited to you guys when I was hired, and you, you guys tried to, to, but things happen, and you, you have your own lives and your own jobs, and a lot of times, you remember stuff, and so that doesn't always happen. It's always good, because that way we can get out the agenda packets on time, but I know that doesn't always happen.
And then we go to Rule 8. Rule 8, page 1.
Yes.
This, uh, when an ordinance, uh, resolution motion, or other measures of any sort, have been placed before the city council and defeated, the same identical quest, uh, question shall not again be considered by the city council until 90 days have elapsed. So, that, uh, if you want to keep that, we can keep that, but, but that means, if this is the rule, then we have been, uh, bothering the resolution, because it's been the time, the same thing can be gone all over.
Well, I don't think it, uh, in violation, ma'am, I really think something was done, and it was just lost. We lost a lot of documents. I don't have no minutes, no resolutions, and no ordinances, like, for three years. And I'm sure you guys were, you know, passing the right ordinance, and passing the right resolution, but there is no documentation, that it's gone, it's absolutely, I can't find it anywhere, so. Same thing goes with this, uh, resolution, so I don't think you were in violation, I just think the document cannot be located, it cannot be found.
Okay, well, we just, uh, we'll have to, uh, do this resolution at the next meeting, anyway.
Under, under Rule 13, uh, on the word of business, couple of items, you know, that I feel that this should be eliminated, uh, like, section number five, under informational items, you have Cristo City Correctional Center report, we don't even have a correctional center anymore. So I understand how we drafted, but I think we keep, we keep general, or put general information, where the format can be used as, as our business changes, and it will still fit the format that we have, I think that's the kind of methodology we need to adopt.
Right, right. Okay, so.
So this is how we need to go.
So we'll go ahead and do that, and prepare it, and submit it to, uh, Ms. Alala, I think.
Aye.
Okay, then, uh, we're, uh, no action on, uh?
No.
Item 1, item 9.1. Okay, item?
21 is brought back, right?
Yes.
Put it to table?
Right, right. Okay, so we, we, we have a motion to table, uh, item 9.1?
I vote.
Okay, Councilman Daigos, your motion, second. Seconded by Mayor Portem Diaz. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Will this be indefinitely or for the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay. Well, then, you have this vote on priority.
Get to us.
Okay.
Okay, item 9.2, consideration for protection regarding the mayoral declaration amendment, number 8. This item was requested by Councilwoman Reese, but unfortunately, as we know, she's not going to be, to be here, but she had requested that, uh, we take no action on this item, okay?
Okay. Do you know what was your concern, Major?
Our concern was, our team, to probably discuss and bring it back because of the number of cases.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll take no action, and then, you know, if you can...
Yeah.
Put which point on the table, I guess?
Yeah, we make the, the change, right. Um, item 9.3, consideration and appropriate action regarding amendment, number 17-04, amusement redemption machines, and consider closing them down. Will this you ask?
Yeah, I, I, I brought this to the table, like, I've got it, you know, numerous times, or at least three or four. My main concern is that, uh, these, uh, these businesses, or these, you know, machines, you know, the numbers, so I guess the numbers, can you help me out on the numbers that we have, the cases that we have right now?
How's the two right now? Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, we have, uh...
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do want to follow you. So when you say eighty-four, what cases are that?
Cases of the COVID case.
Oh, that's, sorry, sorry.
Thursday, total of 6:43.
I'm sorry?
Total of 6:43, eighty-four current, active. 5:49 recovered. There is 10 deaths and four hospital licenses with us, of yesterday at 10:00 PM. That's what emergency management sent out.
So the number is, right now, is what?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
We haven't sent out today's number yet.
Out of those eighty-four, there's, uh, nine from the prior.
What do you think, Major?
And how many of those were, were, uh, do you have a count as to, how many of those were also part of the CCIS entity?
Uh, Jesse would have that.
Okay, can you give that first?
Aye, I agree with you.
Thank you, sir.
And, and we don't, uh, we, we, we have, we don't have a, a, a number of entities, like, uh, for instance, like, uh, we can't, we, we can't say, like, uh, we have cases from the amusement, you know, uh, stoplights, but what we're trying to do here is, we're trying to prevent that. And as numbers go up, you know, that's one of the places that a lot of people go, and they stay there for three, four, five hours. Now, uh, that's my main concern, I mean, before, I just wanted to, to, for, for us to help each other out, to, uh, close them for now, while the, the numbers go down, or... But they haven't gone down, they're going up. So that's the, that's the main reason that I, and the ordinance, and we have an ordinance that they can, they can, uh, but we, I want to amend, amend that, that ordinance, and we could, uh, we could close them down, because I guess that's the only, that's the only solution there is. I mean, I've, I've been trying to, to, uh, work something out, like, let's just close them for the meantime, and it doesn't happen, you know, it, it doesn't happen, and if we make, pass an ordinance that they cannot be in the city limits, that's, that's the only way we could, we could close them. And, and, and it probably sounds unfair, or whatever, but I'm, I'm trying my best to, to work, you know, or to at least, uh, time back, to close them down for, while this epidemic, you know, starts going down, and, and we are guaranteed to control it, and it's not happening.
Well, in, in my opinion, I, I think if we're going to act on something like that, I think we need to be neutral to the whole community, okay? I don't think we should be, uh, pinpointing specific businesses. I think if we're going to do it, we're gonna do it on two hundred of them. I, I don't think that we are in position to... I don't, I don't think that we are in a position to tell an entity or a business owner, hey, you guys have to close. I think that's a part of a government, you know, Texas, Texas Department of Health can pass those orders to us. I, I, I think to me, we are kind of specifying, hey, only this entity needs to close, but the rest can't open. And I think it's very unfair for the business owner. I don't know if there's business owners here or not. But if I would own one, something like that, and then the council makes that type of action, I think it's very unfair, very unfair. I think to me, in my opinion, what I've been seeing here, the, yes, that the COVID nineteen is spreading. However, we still have restaurants out there that are still open to seventy-five percent. They still have to follow the same protocols and procedures that the government issued. I think the, whatever this machine establishment can, I'm pretty sure they're following the same protocol, right? Other than that, you know, my expected would probably give them some expectations. But what I'm seeing the growth is at the school. The school is not even closing and that's where the problem is. I mean, I get caught practically almost every day that there's another one and another one gets, and another one gets COVID. I mean, that's where the hotspot is at, okay? And I think that we need to work together with the school, with the emergency management to, to prevent that hotspot from spreading. And the school is not even closing, but then you want to come in and close, you know, the establishment, this little establishment, we haven't seen any numbers grow from there. No from the restaurants, no from the barber shops, no from other stores. So, I don't know, I, I mean, I have a different point of view than, than what you're bringing to the table.
And I'm, and I understand that the thing is there, it's been, it's been over and over that, that I hear the same, now I'm hearing it from you, so that, that's just, to me, is just an excuse. Because I'm not saying, I'm not pinpointing, but the thing is, I also want to talk to different people about the restaurants, about, I can't, I can't, I can't control anything of that. You're right about that, but the thing is that if, if, it's like, for instance, like the trail, how many cases we got out of the trail and it's closed, that's the count, but still, we, we're not saying that there is a problem. We're just saying we're trying to prevent. And I'll do, you know, I've, I've said to the school, I mean, I was against it day one to, to open schools. I mean, I'm worried because the kids need to go to school, but there's a lot of, you know, and there's a hotspot there, but the thing is, we need to help to prevent, you know, before the schools are, they were closed, we were, I was trying to push that, let's go ahead and help the, let's go ahead and combine ourselves with helping the school to door when they were closed, they're open now. But I was just trying to do something that needed to be done or recommended, you know? And the thing is, but you got a good point for saying.
I'm not a recommendation listener, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to make sure that without pinpointing certain, certain businesses, okay? Because this is all, I mean, why don't we bring, why don't we bring?
I, I brought it to the table. The thing is that.
Saying that's, that's not how it's supposed to be governed, governing. I think you would go through the governor. We need to look at the whole thing and make a blanket decision that is going to be across the board and very important.
I agree with you about the hotspot, you know, and I, I do what you're saying, Congressman Daniels. But there's also another hotspot which is really happening and that is when people get together in their homes, back behind their homes, whatever, they get together and people come in from out of town and the class, that's very, very hotspot there, that's the school, that's, you know. So, are you making a motion to?
Well, and I'm glad you brought that up because that's another, we, we can't, you know, I mean, all this time, we haven't been able to control that. I mean, I'm not I don't want to use the word control, but, but we can't, it's out of, there's, there's people gathering more than ten and, and, you know, it's, but you know, it's just a. But it's not, I'm not pinpointing, I'm, I, you know, it's like anywhere, you can get it in your own home, this COVID nineteen, I understand all that. You can get it in H E B, you can get it in Dollar General. What I'm saying, places where, like school, you know, you have the kids there at least eight hours or six hours. So that's why, and then they're kids. So that makes it a high spot to, to kids that, you know, can get that viral now. And, and the casinos or amusement, you know, places that people go there and, and they stay three, four hours there and it's a close. It's a close one up there, that's another one, and then it's a lot of people that, and this COVID doesn't, is not looking for elderly people. It takes, you can get it if you're young, you're healthy. Nowadays, it's all over. But I'm concerned about the, also about the elderly that go there and people that are, you know, and that's just a concern in my behalf. Now, it, it, it seems that I'm trying to, you know, maybe do that, but I'm not doing that. I'm trying to, you know, get my word across that I care about our community and.
I think you're the same way. I mean, I have the same feelings, same thoughts.
But we, well, but then we gotta, we gotta attack, you know, and help each other, attack the, and get, like you said, well, let's come to a solution or maybe get not only go, or me, I'm saying, oh, because this is me, no one else. I'm not trying to go against anyone, I, I, but that's one of the things that I'm, I, I think it's really a place where, where elderly go and people stay there three, four, five hours versus H E B or versus Dollar General versus, you know, they just go and go and buy their things and then come out. They don't stay there and chit chat. So, it's just, and, but I do understand what you're saying. And it, it seems that it looks that way, but that's not the way it is. It's not the way it is.
Congressman Daniels, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion, yeah.
Okay, a motion by Congressman Baracas. Secondary motion? Anything to leave a comment? Well, look, Wesley and I go to second. Well, no, I'm looking for a second condition, please, motion. There's no second? Okay, there's no second, uh?
No.
So he dies. Okay? So, I have to die. Okay, so.
You can counter motion or you can no action?
I'm sorry?
You can take a counter motion or you can do no action?
Okay. We have a counter, uh, motion? Okay, so, no actions.
Mayor? I have the numbers be all. Did Jesse send the numbers that Mr. Daniels requested? It's ten active at the school right now and about fifteen in quarantine or more due to close contact. But it's ten confirmed right now for the I S D. And that's to make sure students and, and staff.
Personnel.
Personnel and more than fifty in quarantine due to close contact to those ten.
Please, I asked, I asked Jesse Wohaldo to provide us the breakdown by La Prada and Bezo. Would you ask him if he can break down?
I can't, he says he's left and he's about to eat, so.
Yeah.
He just left the school board meeting, so he would, he would give it to me, but I can't now.
I asked him before, he hasn't been able to provide that, you know, either myself or the jury, so I wish he would though, because it'd be nice if we knew.
I, I believe that we can request that information from the state alone, as you would like, I mean.
Yeah, well, we can, but, but Mr. Wohaldo, like he does every evening, but he can.
We just want a breakdown of counting by Bezo, La Prada, this decision.
Yes, exactly.
I'm sure he can do that and I think he does have that on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, because there's a lot of people that ask, you know, how many are actually asked and how many are Bezo or La Prada. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's proceed, let's go to item nine point four, consideration for connection to approve the financial reports for October twenty twenty. Senator?
Okay, for the month of October, we collected three hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-three. We spent three, three hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and forty-six. We collected fifty-five thousand three seventy-six million of this debt. Any questions?
Yeah, Senator, do we, do we reserve or do we deposit money into your, our utility reserves?
Only the twenty-five thousand.
Only for the payment or for the reserve?
Well, no, just for the, for the state, the U S D payment.
That's all right. Good idea, brother. What was that?
The twenty-five thousand that we transfer every month for the, for the payment, the U S D payment.
Okay, so I'm not for the reserve. At least you have a reserve as well, right?
So far, we haven't deposited it.
Okay. And do you know, do you know how much is required? Can I have it on reserve?
Yes, I believe it's at least three months of our, of our budget.
And how much do we have in there?
Oh, it's done. Ever since that state left it, I think we haven't been able to deposit it.
Okay, uh. So I think this is the city manager's question, I think, so, okay.
Uh, the auditor, on his audit, he recommended that we start a reserve.
Well. Well, contrary to that, I think we signed a note, we passed a bond that is required for us to have that utility fund in there with those funds. That's the whole reason why we raised the rates. One was to make sure that we have enough funding to repay the, the bond, the revenue bond, and also enough funds that we can keep as a reserve. Actually, there were two reserves. I think one was a utility reserve and one, one was a capital improvement reserve. So there was actually two reserves in there. And we needed to deposit so much money, I can't remember what specifications of the contract it had, but I know there were some specifications in there. And I think we need to start doing that. I think we need to start being compliant with that. Because that's the whole, that's how the city gets more rich and we are able to get money to funds of other projects, buy equipment and, you know, do a lot of the things that we can't do right now, because all we're doing is getting the money and spending it. Getting the money and spending, we're not saving anything. And that's not the way you're supposed to run it.
But I'll address that with the city manager, very good opportunity.
Um, I guess, when you look into the, you can probably do a relationship to how much we should start going and then start doing it, okay? Then with the next meeting, people are ready to.
Okay.
Under the, under the city manager's report, of course, he wasn't here, but there's something that I wanted to bring up, okay? And that is that every year, I guess it's customary that the city has a lunch for, Thanksgiving lunch for the employees and, and they call it a mandatory training time and then, then they eat the lunch. Because of the situation that we have with the quarter, I don't know, Sandra, but I think we should probably not do that this year. You know, if there's too many people that are going, that are together in, in one restaurant, it is more than, than we're supposed to, so we would probably be violating the policy ourselves. I, I, I don't know if this is not an exception item, but I was going to.
The Governor Abbott, on the ten rule, is people that are not employees. But, but I get what you're saying, but just, you know, you wouldn't be in violation, but I understand that you want to take these precautions, then, you know, that would be something that I guess Ms. Camarillo or the N F D this baby's in charge would have to decide with the guidance of the council.
I know that the county's having a curbside. They're just going to pick up a plate and go. I mean, I don't know, since we paid for the caterer, we can change it to just curbside and do it that way. Because I know, I mean, we're going to have it here and it is, it is going to be correct.
Yeah, it is.
You were going to have it here?
Yeah.
It's not.
Not a restaurant.
And you already paid it?
No, for the, for the caterer, no, we have it here.
And we have, how many employees?
We have sixty-five.
Can do that.
Yeah, we're going to use this side and all the way over there to, to the.
To the close session and the break.
I guess if anything, we could probably do a curbside, but, you know, rather than just canceling or just, you know, we've had to cancel a lot, a lot of things this year. And, uh, I don't know, we'll just, uh. What do you think?
I'll go. Well, I could call Mr. Medina and see if they haven't bought the stuff, if they already bought the stuff, I think, I mean.
Oh, it's going to be served turkey, you don't.
Yeah, it's turkey.
It's ramen, you know.
Yeah, who's going to do that, Mr. Medina?
Mr. Medina, Albert.
Yeah. Well, I guess if he's already purchased the, I'm sure he probably has, it's too close now, you know, it's next week.
It's not this Friday, actually.
Yeah, if he's already done it, then.
Today's the month.
You're going to have to go curbside.
Yeah, he, he bought, he made it, he spent that for you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, so, he's going to do curbside, but.
Well, that is just something, I guess you can, you as county members can relate to the city manager, since it's not on the agenda and it would be administrative at this point.
Right, yes. Okay, well, the matter, you're, you're here in her place, anyway, you, you, okay? So, we go to curbside. Um, just something that I thought about, you know, and I think it's best to do it that way. Okay, uh, so we have a motion to approve the financial reports for October twenty twenty. To move the motion by Mayor Porte Diaz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Congressman Baracas. Any questions for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Item ten, we, we need to proceed to the close session. I don't think there's going to be that long, but anyway, we do need to go to close session. The city council, meeting in code meeting authorized by the provisions of the opening exact chapter five five one of the Texas government code. This close session is in accordance with the Texas government code sections set forth below. Five five one point zero eight seven deliberation regarding economic development negotiations discussing pertaining to economic development possibility. Okay, so the time?
The time is seven nineteen.
Seven nineteen, okay. We will proceed into the close session and will return. On November twenty twenty at?
Seven forty P M.
Seven forty P M, okay. And now declare the city council, city of the city is convening to open session and that all specified members are present. Um, okay, item eleven, open session, no action. Okay, item twelve, any motion to adjourn?
Oi.
That motion by Congressman Baracas, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Porte Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Meeting adjourned approximately seven forty P M.
Seven forty, thank you. Oh, and on ten minutes.